All right. Good evening. Welcome. It's 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 27th, and I want to call to order this regular meeting of the Ferndale School Board. Before we get to the agenda, will everyone please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or to propose new items. So any changes?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as presented.
All right, there's a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, it's been moved to adopt the agenda as written, and we will move forward. So during this time when we are conducting our meetings via video conferencing, we're accepting public comment through the portal on the district website or through email. Any comments received prior to the board meeting will be read aloud at the meeting. Any comments that come through the chat feature during the board meeting will be reviewed and answered after the meeting. As of tonight, we, as of 7:00, we had not received any public comments for tonight's meeting. I also want to remind you that Dr. Quinn answers, written, writes answers to questions received from the community during the month, and she posts them under the public comments section on Board Docs Agenda and also on the website. If you don't see your question this month, check again next month or resurface your question. So item 5.01 on our agenda is a quarterly report from the Bond Oversight Committee, which is an independent seven-person group that was officially commissioned and recognized by the school board in May of 2019 to receive and review information from the district about bond projects, raise questions and make suggestions to the board or its designee, and to inform the public concerning the expenditure of bond dollars. The primary way the Bond Oversight Committee communicates its work to the public is by preparing quarterly reports, which are both posted on the district website and presented to the school board. The Oversight Committee's last quarterly report was presented to us in June of 2020. The most current report is posted on Board Docs. So at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Riley Cornellson, who was co-chair of the Bond Oversight Committee to present their quarterly report. Riley?
Thank you, Andrew. Hopefully, the board had a opportunity to look over our report and may have questions. I'll kind of do a quick overview and then kind of open it for questions or discussion as needed after that. So just kind of work and talk to bottom. As a group, we unfortunately lost somebody due to some personal commitments. But on the positive side, we actually added one additional member who many might know, Joe Lupo, who was very involved with the bond task force process, basically from start to finish. So really glad to have his input on the committee and helping kind of tie in, you know, from the very beginning conversations to what we're actually getting done. Kind of some general items over the past quarter to hit on kind of outside of our, our specific remit of the, of the committee. We addressed again, the debt policy, which we mentioned last time, long-term maintenance, and then kind of a long-term fiscal planning. These are all items that we're kind of addressing on a monthly basis with Andrew and the district, and we'll continue to kind of focus on that. I believe we had sent a letter to the board regarding these items a couple of months ago now, but just wanted to bring it back up and let you know that we're tackling them as time allows on a month-to-month basis. So as far as the bond work goes, come a couple of major items addressed over the past quarter, one being the Performing Arts Center. Kind of a unfortunate discovery is that the seismic upgrades that we understood to have been done were more of a fix rather than a full repair and seismic upgrade after the 2000 squally quake. So in the process of reviewing the findings of the, what it's going to take to bring that building up to code for seismic requirements. So unfortunately, a portion of that money allocated for the pack will most likely be diverted towards making the building safe with the remainder being used to, to upgrade as needed. The second item was, the second major item we kind of spent a lot of time on was the review of the existing CTE building and repurposing a portion of that for the Golden Eagle Academy and kind of virtual learning component of the high school. There was a ton of debate as to what that meant against what the commitments were made early. And the decision was made, or the recommendation, I guess, was made conditionally from the Oversight Committee to move forward with that plan with the understanding that that space would be updated to essentially equitable standards for the educational purposes of that space. So I know Dykman, the district and Cornerstone are in the process of developing what that looks like and pricing out what that would cost. So we will continue to keep that on the docket as well. Moving kind of into our key functions, continue to work on ways to communicate better with the general public, updating a dashboard on the website, updating a schedule of critical projects and have moved into kind of seeing what else we can do with regards to cash flow, revenue streams and costs, as well as looking at schedules and more schematic renderings of the school to be able to share with the public online at this point and hopefully in person soon. We're also involved with reviewing contracts. Kind of the major one to hit on was with Tiger Construction. He did all the secure vestibule work, which is now, if not complete, about 95% complete. And felt that that was a good value, good contract, and work that has been done has been done well and within budget. So another major item that we spent a lot of time on over the past quarter was the review of the 100% design development drawings and documents that came out a couple of months ago. And there's kind of, I guess, four major points that we, or four major themes we pulled out of those those drawings, the first being the, the water, stormwater treatment system due to the elevation and flatness of the site. There's some fairly limited abilities of how to capture and treat water using a gravity-fed system, which is obviously the desired system versus a mechanical system, which can fail and requires extensive maintenance. That being said, the system currently designed is, is a major cost impact to the project. So as the Bond Oversight Committee discovered this or brought this up, it was, it had already been brought up or, and then been in, been in discussion with Dykman and Freeland Engineering about how to improve that system. I believe that's still ongoing. However, with the, the limits of site, there is not a massive list of alternatives at this point, but want to continue to try to find the best solution for that problem. Kind of the next major item that we discussed was daylighting, heating, cooling, shading. There's a, this very significant amount of curtain wall storefront in windows as well as sun shades on the building for the high school. And while there is a lot of good reason for that and a lot of benefits to that with regards to natural lighting, cooling or natural cooling, there's also some kind of drawbacks and downstream impacts with the, the current design that we think are important away against the cost or weigh the, the benefits against the cost, I should say. The designs team is, is again continuing to look at this this item, and we're kind of anxious to see what options or possible options they have to weigh those two things against each other. Kind of the third general overarching theme, I think we called it architectural opulence, which is, is basically a fancy way of saying there's a bunch of small little things that can be changed, saved, modified, and essentially have dollars diverted into what may be considered more functional use to the project. So just for example's sake, items that would kind of fall under this category are there column covers, materials for both ceilings and wall coverings, floor coverings and floor finish types, door types, relighting, again, glazing systems, which I'd kind of mentioned earlier, fixture types, and then just the general over over complication of details that can be kind of streamlined. All this, oh, excuse me. And then the fourth item, kind of overarching item is just continuing to look at future planning for both program as well as building expansion. I know the building is kind of designed with a plan to extend the classroom wing for future enrollment, which is good, but keeping that in mind as well as planning with regards to program. So the primary example of that was a discussion around the use of the band or the use of the existing parking lot for band practice. In the current design, everything would essentially be relegated to the, the new football field, which would be much more usable than the current grass field. However, removing, removing the ability to use that, that parking lot is essentially overflow, kind of hinders your ability to schedule. So items like that like practice fields and, and exist, like I said, existing programs are something to keep in mind from the design team as they move forward. So kind of over, overarching with those four major topics, kind of our overarching theme has just been to focus, focus on providing value, value to the taxpayer who's funding this project and providing value to the students who will end up using it versus spending money on fluff, if you will, as much as possible. So I think there's commitment from both Cornerstone and Dykman to continue down that path. But I think it's really important that the district, as well as the Bond Oversight Committee, continue to stay focused kind of on that, on that goal as well. Moving on to security projects. Again, I kind of touched on it earlier, but we reviewed Tiger's contract for the secure vestibules. That work is essentially complete. There were some change order works, some change order work, which is to be expected with existing building work, but they amounted to probably less than what I would have initially and others would have initially anticipated. So the security vestibule or secure vestibule projects are looking to be within 1% or 2% of the bond allocated value. So that's really good to, to see and a really good thing to share with the community. So next major topic kind of in our report is construction funding review. So a major item that we have kind of been spearheading for the, almost the past year now, I guess, would be this debt policy, which I know we've talked about. We're really excited to, a, hear that the, the district decided to go forward with the financial advisor for this next set of bonds or the the most recent sale of bonds. And moreover, that the bond went very, the bond sale went very well, and we actually received a better percentage than we had projected, or I believe a better percentage than we got on the first sale. If I'm not mistaken, Mark, you could point, but and then on top of that, sharing that information with the the general public that that is going to translate into a a lower anticipated bond rate on their tax bill. So I know we attached a letter, Sandy McMillan, with our group wrote a letter to my Ferndale News and shared, shared kind of a more detailed explanation of that story. So that was an awesome component to be part of and see kind of come to fruition. So looking forward to again, hopefully keeping this third sale in the same wheelhouse and, and having a good return on investment for stakeholders in the community. So let's see. So the last, last item is evaluating cost-saving measures. And again, we've touched on some of these things before, but I know things have changed in the world of COVID, but again, the corporate business community sponsorship is something we want to keep in the in the realm of possibility as we move through this process to working on the high school. As I mentioned before, we want to continue to advocate for any cost-saving measures moving forward, even through the construction process, not just in design. And then again, wanted to touch on the maintenance department performing some of the, some of the bond work itself, which we feel is a good, a good thing for, from two perspectives, one for, for cost perspective, not having to bid that work outside. And secondly, for giving them some added familiarity with the systems that they're going to be maintaining over the next, you know, 20, 30, 40 plus years. So with that, I guess in conclusion, it continues to be a good, a good process. Really good discussion and debate, I think, across the board from, from everybody on the committee as well as contractors, designers, school districts. So really encouraged with the, the plans, the design and the process. And again, just want to continue to, to focus on providing value to the community that, that voted yes for this thing and almost more importantly, to people who voted no, knowing that there are a number of projects that still need to be completed and a number of needs that the district needs to take care of in the future. So making sure that we do this, do this thing right for the kids and the community. And we're able to, to say we did what we said we were going to do. So I guess with that, if anybody does have questions, I will try to answer them as best I can. And thank you.
Thanks, Riley. Great report. So I'll open it up for questions, comments. One thing that I would just bring up, just to clarify, is that the the deal that we had on selling the bonds, the rates and everything were really a function of the changes in the market, because I don't want to leave the impression that somehow something was missed on the first sale because it wasn't. And what we really got from the financial advisor was a letter of affirmation that the deal that Mark and our counsel and DA Davison put together was in fact a great one. And it was, I think it's really important that we have that affirmation, just so people can look at it and know that the right steps were taken. But I do want to clarify that the same process was followed, and we had the affirmation of the work that was done by our team and market rates had changed, and that gave us an even better deal than the first time. So I'll throw that out.
Apologies if that didn't come across that way from the report. I just yeah.
And it's, and it's great to have the affirmation. I, I won't argue that point. It's nice to have another set of eyes, look at it and say, yeah, you guys have done a great job. But I don't want to leave the impression that something was missed on the first box sale because everything we've gotten back from outside sources has been, that was also a great benefit to the taxpayer. So
yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, other questions, um, comments?
Have that affirmation, but given that the affirmation was that, yep, everything's good here. We like what you've done, and it didn't really change anything. I do think when it comes to the bond sale next year, I don't think it should be a given that we do a financial advisor again. Then I think that should be a point of discussion. There was something in the, in the report that said every bond sale should have a financial advisor was something that the Bond Oversight Committee had said. I don't know if I necessarily agree with that. I think it's something to visit.
Well, I, I think we can have further discussions on it, but conditions may be very different at the next sale where a financial advisor may play a different role, but in this particular role, it was really an affirmation of the work that was done. I won't, I certainly don't want to negate what a financial advisor might provide in a different scenario, and who knows what it's going to be like when we do the third sale. But certainly for this one, I, I think it was really
I just don't want the decision to be made now of what we're going to be doing 10 months from now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it's not going, it'll be up to the, to the group, but I think from, I think from a outside look, looking in, the affirmation is definitely a positive. And so I, I think as we get ready for the, the third sale, we'll need to have that discussion about that other set of eyes. And again, I don't, I, I didn't say that to negate what a, what the benefit might be in the future, but I wanted to be sure we looking backwards, didn't feel like somehow we missed something because we hadn't. So that was, that was my main point. You know, I attend the meetings and the, I, I'm always impressed at how prepared everyone is for those meetings and the detail of the questions that are asked. Incredible detail. I mean, they had a thousand-page doc. What, what was the size of that document, Riley? I mean, it was
I think the specs were 1,500 pages or something, and the, the drawing set was like 250 pages of drawings or something to that degree.
Yeah, and, and the, the committee to a person comes prepared to discuss what their questions and concerns are. So I think from the public, from the standpoint of what we wanted to be able to provide to the public, which was an independent group looking at the bond, the use of the bond dollars, we're, we're getting we're getting a great return on that in terms of folks who are looking and saying, yes, you're doing the right thing. The, you know, we're spending the money as we're supposed to. No surprises coming up. Certainly, there are surprises within the construction, but everything is known and discussed and understood as we go through this. The pace of meetings and the, and the, and the amount of expenditures will certainly be going through the roof as they break ground and start actually building and stuff. So it'll be much more of a quick review by the Bond Oversight Committee at that point, but tons of work going into the planning. And so again, Riley, for you and the committee, thank you for your dedication and hard work. It's, it's impressive work that you're doing.
And Andrew, if I may, I just, just like you said, that the, having the financial advisor was a good affirmation for the work we're doing. The Bond Oversight Committee has been that kind of affirmation, just what I was taking notes with, when you know, the things that Riley shared about the, the secure vestibule projects coming in and that they're asking the same questions about the design documents that we, about the design documents. And so that, the whole Bond Oversight Committee process has been a good affirmation for, for us too. So I appreciate that, Riley.
I had a question about the Performing Arts Center. And so the, the fixes done after the 2000 Nusqali earthquake, so those were done. But now that we're going to make improvements to it, there's going to be retrofits that are needed. I'm wondering, was it when we did those fixes, were we meeting codes then and codes have changed? Or was it the fixes we made then failed? Or why is there this unforeseen difference? What happened?
So the, the understanding that, that I have and I guess that we have is the Oversight Committee from, from, from the Bond Task Force discussions about the Performing Arts Facility, we knew there were repairs made after the Nusqali earthquake in 2000. After some additional investigation by I believe it was the engineering or Dykman or Dykman and their consultants, there were essentially repairs made to damage after the Nusqali quake. There was not any seismic retrofitting upgrades made to the building itself.
Was that done to code? Did we skip anything there or did we meet what we needed to meet? I guess that's a question for Mark, maybe. I don't know.
My guess would be that if, if there were repairs made, it would have been within the current requirements of the time. So that, that would be my, my guess. I don't think there would be, you know, the, the scale of the repairs was, you know, fairly extensive. You know, all the metal siding that's on that building happened at that time. So Mark may know more about specifics, but
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's like everything else. It's a combination of things. So they repaired the damage. They didn't do any seismic upgrades like Riley stated, and subsequently the, the codes have changed. So you know, there would be the opportunity now even to say, you know what, we're not really going to do that. We can, it's an existing facility. We don't have to upgrade to the new seismic standards, but it doesn't make sense at this point to not bring the building up to a safer standard while we're in there doing the work. So it's, you know, there's always some discretion when you're in these, in these situations with older buildings and, and new code requirements.
Yeah, I, I think, and there was a discussion about just the safety of the students. If, if something should happen, that we want to make sure the buildings is If, if something should happen that we want to make sure the buildings is safe as it can be, but there were discussions about changes in the codes and. And bringing it up to code, current code for safety purposes, so.
Making a choice to not do those things would be making a choice to not make it safe for the students.
Right, exactly. Once we know that, know it's there, I don't, I don't see how we can.
Not do it.
We, we have to make this choice of safety first, we have to. I think.
I would agree with that.
Other questions or comments?
Sure, Andrew, um, I appreciate you, appreciate the work that the, the. On oversight committee has done, I appreciate Andrew, you mentioning as far as the bond sale and that, that difference between the two point eight percent and one point six was. More due to market than any change in procedure or anything else, because, you know, certainly when I read Sandy's letter, I got the impression that. If I didn't know the behind the scenes, I would think that the, you know, it was the work of this financial advisor that did most of that and. You know, why didn't we do it the first time to get the lower rate? So I appreciate you clarifying that, the other thing that I thought was interesting is. Within the main report of the bond oversight committee, they talk about how the district needs to develop a. Maintenance plan or program. And essentially if memory serves me, back when we had the. Facilities Advisory Committee, they went through a big review on all the buildings and we actually had that kind of a plan all laid out. Unfortunately with the bond, it, you know, it took a few tries to get that passed, which kind of kicked the, the plan down the road, so to speak. You know, but I think we do have a lot of that facilities master plan, we just don't, we just need to get it back on track. As we get the school building. So I'm not sure if they're not aware of that, that exists, or if it's, I don't think it's that out of date.
Well, I did, I have shared that with the bond oversight committee, as well as the fact that just the timing of everything, you know, for us to. Work on that and focus on that really has been actually, because it's not as high priority as doing distance learning and then back to school learning and then. Distance yet again. Is, has been, has been what has taken precedent over everything else, I mean, it's, it's been what we focused on. And so, you know, we can circle back to that, a lot of that work has been done, it just does need to be updated, it just hasn't been. As, as. Because of the time that it will take to do that, it hasn't been as high a priority as focusing on how are we gonna. Conduct education for our kids in pandemic, so well, I'm sure we'll circle back to that, we're gonna have. This as a further discussion on our study session and, at our study session in November. And so at that point, we'll go through and, and review the suggestions from the bond oversight committee and have a full discussion of those.
That sounds good.
So again Riley, thank you for all your hard work, thanks for soloing on the reporting. And, and for being so consistent and dedicated to the work that you're doing. You are welcome to stay with us for the rest of our meeting, or you can. Take off.
I got a, I got a three-year-old and a two-year-old with their face pressed up against the glass of my window, so I am. Much as I enjoy seeing all you, I am gonna go spend some time with my kids, so.
Yeah, let them inside.
Join us.
Yeah, we don't mind them coming.
Thanks Riley.
Yep, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is a standing topic at all of our school board meetings. A report on the capital bonds project, we've gotten kind of a, an overview from Riley's report, but. I don't know if there's more to tell tonight, but I'm gonna give the floor to Mr. Dibok in case he has anything to add.
You know, I, I don't really have anything to add, the, the architects and the construction. Company and the engineers are all hunkered down trying to. Get the drawings and designs all ready to go to permit, so. Things are pretty focused right now on just. Kind of the behind the scenes actually doing the work. So I think you're pretty current on where we're at right now, I'm happy to entertain any questions. But I don't think there's a whole lot new to report since the last time we spoke.
And I, I don't recall off the top of my head, but when do we anticipate the third sale would be?
At next summer.
Next summer, okay.
Yeah. And again, that varies depending on market conditions, your assessment was exactly correct, that was the main difference between the two. Do first sales, the, the first sale was phenomenal, near historic lows and the second sale was. Even better, because the, the way the market is right now.
Yeah.
When, when we sold the first batch of bonds, we did better than almost anyone, even in that week. We got great sale for that particular time, I'm not opposed at all to the. Financial advisor, but we got exactly the same rate as we would have gotten if we hadn't had a financial advisor this last sale. He said that too, he said, you did great, it was good, I don't know what the conditions are gonna be like next summer. So, you know, I, I'm with Melinda, we can, you know, talk about that later. But we did not get a better, better rate because we had a financial.
When we had our, well, when the. When there was the campaign for the bonds and there were the flyers that talked about what the anticipated rate would be for the bond. Can we update? The public or the website or something, get that out saying this is what we anticipated it would be and this is what it actually is going to be, I think. If it's a better rate than what we anticipated, that's something we definitely should, well, we should share what the rate is regardless.
Now, remember, we did that after the first sale, if, if you, if you remember, how did we come up with two seventeen? It's because our bond rate was sixty seven cents less than what we projected or anticipated. I've been meaning to get together with Mark to figure out this next, what this next batch of bonds will mean, but, but we. I don't, I think people have forgotten that, but it was sixty.
That might be actually a question that is better suited to the committee for Ferndale Schools, since they had that. That flyer. That said what they anticipate, maybe they could do a follow-up of this is what it actually is.
They could, we can too, that's strictly informational. I don't, I don't know how much longer they're going to be in. A committee, but.
Sure, about a week.
I, I hope.
Levees, we all know this, levees are renewable, so they'll have to come back together at some point.
I, yes.
True.
Okay, I made a note, that, that is, that is something I've been meaning to do, Melinda, is sit down with Mark and figure out if we can. Chart out the, we should have probably been talking about that more.
There is so much talk of. You know, back in February of you had promised us this rate and then you changed it, it was like, well. First of all, it wasn't a promise, the projection, projections change, this is also a projection that has changed, but it has changed for the better for the taxpayer. And getting that word out and in writing, something where you can take a screenshot, you know, show it to somebody.
Okay, good, very good suggestion.
And, and some of this was shared, it's just. People have to be willing to look beyond one column and see the total picture before making their judgments about. One rate versus the, the second rate and what the, what the cumulative effect is, but nonetheless, good point. Good point. Thanks Mark.
Hey Mark, one quick question that you, if you don't have the answer to at this point, which I don't mean to spring it on you, but. Be interesting to know if not now, when we have our study session, the, the oversight committee made one point in their. Report about they were disappointed to hear the district attorney declined the direction for projects to be accomplished by the district, was that? Do you know anything about that, or I should have asked Riley, but I forgot about it until just now.
Yeah, the, the, they're referring to a, a situation that we had with. The roofing project at, at Vista, I believe. The, it was large enough that it put us over. Bid threshold that the district attorney, the district's attorney. Felt very strongly that it would put us in some significant jeopardy if we were to pursue that on our own without going through. The, including the engineers and architects on designing the roof project and the bid specs. So it with, under advice of council, we. We pay him a lot of money to keep us out of trouble, so we listened to his advice on that. The, the, the oversight committee is, and you know, I don't blame them for it, they, they've been very. Uh, one of their main kind of things that they come back to and, and kind of push us on is, is trying to do projects in-house. Which, to a certain level makes a lot of sense, because it, it saves a whole lot of money. But we've got to have the ability to handle it in-house, and some of the things are just large enough. And complex enough that, that we just don't have the, the capability of, of managing it on our own.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thanks Mark, thank you Dr. Quinn, you can find more information about the bond and the work of the bond oversight committee on the district website. In addition, Dr. Quinn publishes weekly bond updates every Friday, and you can sign up to have them sent directly to your email. The next item on the agenda, five point, what, I'm big pardon.
For eighty-two Fridays in a row.
Eighty-two Fridays in a row, if you want number eighty-three, sign up. Uh, the next item on the agenda, five point oh two deals with the information campaign for the replacement levy. That is on the November third ballot, just a week away, which all registered voters have now received. With only a week to go, the election, to the election deadline, I will call on Dr. Quinn to share any updates about the final stages of the campaign.
Andrew, I don't have a lot to share, I think this one's just about baked, I mean, I think. We've done everything that we could to get the word out, I wrote to you last night that we had a three meetings last. Week with our non-English speaking families, the, the main purpose was to make sure that they had the information they needed about. Our moving to the hybrid model, but we also talked about the levy a little bit there. We. Yeah, we're, we, there's not much else to be done, in fact, we. We're just talking today that I think there's a, there's a ruling that in the last seven days. No political ads can be put out or on social media for anything, new ones, they can be. So. We, we've. We've done what we can do, I think the campaign has a meeting tomorrow, or Thursday night, I think the campaigns. Winding up their work. You'll, you probably, if you've driven around, seen lots of sign waivers, but that's on the campaign side, but. I think now we're just encouraging people to get their ballots in.
I, I think the, at least on Facebook, the vignettes that have been used have been really good, they've been well done. And so I, I hope they reach a lot of people, but.
Well, if we, like everything else, we reinvented what it means to put on an information campaign in the middle of a pandemic. And I think some of the, some of the things that we did should remain in our toolbox. Like some of outreach things that we talked about the other day that you guys did on Zoom, I think you, we actually reached more people than we have. In some of our past, so anyway. Nope, just crossing our fingers now.
Even though no new political stuff can be put on social media, anything that is out there already, such as those meetings that we had to reach people. Those can all be shared.
Yes.
Still in this time, you just can't create new.
Just can't put new stuff out there.
So I think the, the turnout for Watkin County as of today is fifty-eight point eight percent. I don't know what it is drilling down to like the, the school district, I don't know if they have that sort of data now, but.
That's really high.
Yeah.
Forty-one point two percent more to turn in their ballot.
Yeah, so. No, I, I don't have anything else to report, other than we're preparing. Oh, we're preparing some statements and thank yous and press releases to go out once the, we know the. But that's what we always do, you know, once we know the results, we'll send out information to both the media and the community.
Okay, well, thanks Linda, well, if you haven't yet completed and returned your ballots, I encourage you to do so tomorrow. Voting is both a duty and a privilege, as adults, I hope we are modeling this aspect of democracy for the students in our district, so. Please vote. All right, next is our items, we combine these items, but sharing time, seven oh one, seven oh two, seven oh three and seven oh four. So I will call on our student board members to share, Kong and Abhineet.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay. Um, so this week, since Halloween is coming up, the Frendal students have put together a little virtual spirit week, so that's been fun. To see people like taking pictures themselves and putting them on the Frendal students page, so there's that going on. And the second round of driver's ed starts on November sixth, and. If you know anyone who's taking an AP test, you have to be signed up for, for that by November sixth. Um, and if I'm correct, some sports for the school are about to start or some already have, so, um. That's pretty much it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Abhineet, Kong, you have any comments?
I don't have anything much to say, but the other day I was watching the, one of the levy live stream on Facebook. And then I was scrolling down through the old videos of the, of the Frendal Facebook, and I saw like one of, uh, one of those video about how. Uh, Dr. Quinn was interviewing like the elementary students, and then it was one of the most adorable and impactful video I've ever seen. Because it's like, the teachers meant so much for like the elementary student and. It just see how far, like how amazing it is, like for like how for no staff and teacher impact the student daily in their life. Yeah.
I read that, that was, they were adorable. Yeah, thank you Kong for that memory.
All right, for the school board, any sharing that you'd like to do?
Yeah, we talked last week. Somebody else on the meeting had said, oh Kelly, Kelly Larrabee had said, you know, seeing the school bus when she put. Put out her trash and how it was an emotional thing and I agreed with her that it was emotional seeing. Seeing the school bus, however, yesterday on my lunchtime walk, I live very close to Cascadia Elementary. And I went for a walk during my lunch break and saw, must have been kindergarten or first graders out getting. Getting some fresh air and that was, that beat the school bus, so that was awesome, it's good to see them back at school.
Kevin, any word from New Jersey, I have to ask.
It's going well. They actually, the, the Daniels class, one of their projects is. Community service projects is working with some of the local schools in helping to get back into school with COVID. And so Daniel, his group of, I think it's eight students, were actually working with kids. Doing videos on how to wear your mask, how to wash your hands and having, you know, how not to do it, how to do it. And I guess it was turning out really good and they were having a lot of fun with that, so that's pretty exciting.
Very good. All right, superintendent sharing.
Leanne or Jesse, did you have anything? Okay, well, we didn't put reopening on this. Okay, well, we didn't put reopening on this agenda, which is also usually one of our standing items. Because we spent about an hour talking about it last six days ago at your study session, but I do want to just mention that I I just want to give a shout out to our staff in the buildings who are doing such a great job. But kindergartners came back last week in the hybrid model. I I shared a couple of things last night, like the little girl on her first day who said, this is my favorite school ever, and you're my favorite principal. It was her first day ever at school, but it's, you know, and the, we just, we just heard a lot of happy stories. If you saw the Every Thursday program last week, you know, that Juliana Larson, one of our kindergarten teachers was on there and it was, she was great, giving some tips. But yes, wait, today's Tuesday. Yesterday, our first graders joined our kindergartners. So our first graders in the AA group went to school today and are yesterday and today, and then we'll get the other half coming in on Thursday and Friday. And when we met with with the administrative team this week, they said, you know, it's going okay. The next Monday, second and third are coming back and and the following Monday, which is the ninth, fourth and fifth. Next Monday, when it's second and third, that'll be a bigger group. The, we have five elementaries and five executive team members, so we're going to disperse ourselves and go out to the schools next Monday and the assistant principals or whatever they need to to help make sure that everything is going well. We also, Abne, you you were exactly right. We started some athletic practices this yesterday. Eric sent, Trip sent me a message today that said everything went well and the kids were thrilled to be back. He's got some protocols which they have to teach. You know, they're, but the kids will be in masks and they'll be in groups, but so we've started some athletics. And we also have had play tryouts. So the drama department is I know because Kelly Larrabee's son just got cast, so I know the casting has been done in Little Women. And I'm not sure exactly, I think that's going to be a filmed position, production that is you know, that you can watch as a movie instead of a live performance. So and and I I expected maybe to get a little more pushback. How come you're doing activities and athletics and you can't do classes? But I haven't really received any, and I'm, I think that's because people know how much our our young adolescents and teenagers just need to be doing, they need to be doing things. Maybe do English and math online, but they need to be in these activities that are such a vital part of their development, and it's in the activities that we've been able to figure out the cohorting and social distancing. I, that's really what I wanted to share, but I would, I was going to ask John if he could follow on and talk a little bit about your experience this morning with Ellen I. And and, yeah.
So as a, as a way to see how the the plans that we wrote this summer and this fall were playing out, we invited Ellen I to come in and do an in-person audit of of our of our procedures. So this morning, along with the WA Uniserv rep and the the PSE president and then administrative assistant that helps with Ellen I here in the district office. We we went around and we we saw three sites. We went to the the largest of our remote access sites up at Horizon. We went to our largest in-person class right now, which was a kindergarten class up at Cascadia, and then we went down to the high school to see the the largest of our life skills class. And so it's our our closest contact program where we have the most people working in the closest proximity to to kids requiring the most PPE. And they had they had a few small suggestions, frankly. The thing that stuck out in my mind was the the tremendous job that our our staff is doing. So we write all these plans and then our our district nurses who have been absolute just gladiators for these plans teach this the staff what it is that needs to be done, whether or not they like it, because sometimes we're asking them to do things they don't want to do that are harder to make sure that we can, we can pull all this off, but they have been just troopers for us and the, to the person, our staff gets an A plus. As the the gal from Ellen I came around and started asking, well, how do you do this? How do you do that? Looking at the screening and the masks and the distancing and how do you make sure and how do you know? They they flat out, they they knew it to the to the T. It was like they were reading out of our our practices, which means that they got very good instruction. The plans were good and, you know, honestly, we're we're doing what we need to do to keep people safe and and to make this this reopening a go. We weren't perfect. There's a couple of things they gave us. One on unloading buses, another one on our screening that, you know, little detail things that that we can and will fix, but overall, I I was it was very heartening to see what we spent so much time and and effort writing and and making sure was quality is is being played out in our schools. So.
Thank you, John. And then the last thing I'll add is I went to a meeting today with Chris Reichdahl, state superintendent for all state superintendents, and there was a person there representing the state health department and the she, he said that they've they've slightly changed the decision tree to make it clearer that between twenty five and seventy five, if we're doing everything John says, we are safe having kids in our schools and that they, you know, they feel that the studies that they've been able to do so far on schools that have opened that we are not in our state. She said, we have some of the strictest guidelines, but we are not in our state seeing outbreaks in schools. Because of our, because of the strictness of the way we're handling the safety and health and safety guidelines, so the this, at the state level, the health department is saying that they feel more confident that in this twenty five to seventy five range and in, you know, thereabouts, and like Dr. Stern says, we don't pack all the kids on buses if it goes to seventy six for a minute, but you know, but if we stay in that moderate zone and follow these these protocols, our path to getting kids back in school will be quicker. And so I felt, I, you know, I think this is good news. I know it's slower than some people would like and, but I think we are we're we're doing it in a way that hopefully we can keep moving forward instead of having to reverse course. But that's, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone?
I just, um, in in my own work, where people are continue to struggle just in, there's not as much light as usual. Everybody's working more hours than they've ever worked to try to get stuff done that is different from anything we've ever done. And I know that's what you guys administration is doing. I know that's what the teachers are doing, and I just I wonder how how we help to avoid burnout, how we support each other through all of this, and I don't have any answers. But I would love to have more conversation about how do we as a district support each other? So we come through this, okay, because it's tough and it's going to get, the days are still going to get shorter for a while and I, it's not going to get easier for a while. So that's what spins in my head in the middle of the night.
I think, Leanne, that's a good point because, you know, part of the whole social distancing, you could get out, you could do things, and as the days get shorter and the weather gets worse, that avenue or that outlet and that kind of regenerating is going to go away. So it will be important to look at those things and how we can help each other.
Great comments. Anyone else? All right, to the exec team, any other sharing? See a lot of heads going no, so, all right. Well, the final items on the agenda are the consent agendas. The superintendent's consent agenda consists of items dedicated to the superintendent for action, but requiring the boards of final approval. The board's consent agenda consists of routine items for the board to address. The board has had an opportunity to review all of these items prior to this meeting and is therefore able to expedite our work by taking action on them as a group as opposed to one at a time. These items are also available for review on board docs. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve both consent agendas.
I'd make a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda and the board consent agenda as presented.
All right, so we have a motion to approve both the superintendent's consent agenda and the board's consent agenda as attached here too and made a part of the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we've reached the end of the agenda of our October twenty seventh regular school board meeting. Uh, thank you for your participation, and I hereby declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and I'll see you on the night.
Thank you.